Good morning and, uh, good, good evening and welcome to East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisor regular session for Thursday, December 20th, 2018. Just a reminder, recording device will be used during this meeting and let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna turn it over to township solicitor for an ordinance amending Chapter 300.
Thank you. So there's a proposed ordinance to amend a section of your, um, Section 300, which is your definitional section for land uses, to add a definition for directional sign. It also is amending various provisions of your zoning ordinance, which are in Chapter 399 of the code, to delete certain, certain restrictions with respect to accessory structures. It used to be that you could only have an accessory dwelling if it was built after a certain timeframe and that caused some problems for people and people have filed zoning applications seeking variances from that, so there was a recommendation to change that. There's also amendments to change the maximum permitted area of individual freestanding signs in various commercial districts. It also deals with directory signs with multi-tenant uses and also deals with directory signs and menu boards at restaurants. Because this was an amendment to the zoning ordinance, it had to be advertised as a public hearing. We advertised this hearing in the Daily Local News on December 6th and December 13th, 2018. I also sent a copy of the ordinance for public inspection to the Law Library and the Daily Local News. I sent that on December 6th, 2018. The Chester County Planning Commission had to review this ordinance and it provided its comments back to the township manager in correspondence dated November 15th, 2018. The, your own planning commission reviewed this at their meeting on November 7th, 2018 and were comfortable with the changes. Happy to answer any questions? Again, these are sort of cleanup, um, changes mainly to signs and accessory dwellings and they just didn't make it in the, um, the last amendment that you did at the November meeting. They just were, because the task force, the way your task force does them, um, you know, they focus on certain topics at a time, it just didn't get into the comprehensive amendment. Happy to answer any questions?
Anyone?
I have no questions.
Nor do I. You good?
Good.
Okay. Anybody from the audience have any questions? Not that we have a big audience tonight.
I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance 07, 2018.
And I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we're going to record again for the public comments for non-agenda items and remind the rules for conduct of a public meeting established by Resolution 2008. The time allowed to each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless the otherwise present, otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted at the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. Anybody with public comment on non-agenda items?
I do. Um, first, I wanted to find out, back in January when we had our reorganizational meeting, we had a special meeting and we were trying to decide, um, how to move forward with a new solicitor and as myself being a new supervisor, about what kind of procedures that we were going to put in place. And back then, we had all agreed that all correspondence would be shared with the complete board and, um, that hasn't been happening, so I want to know, wanted you guys to, you know, talk about it and figure out how we can move forward. You know, as far as the solicitor, as far as our township manager, uh, board members, we decided that any vendor would, uh, all be shared as the board and it hasn't been happening. I believe it happened for a little while and it kind of slipped through the cracks. So, uh, I do have a copy of the minutes, you know, if you want me to pull them up, I can...
I don't think there's any dispute that that was our agreement. I'm not aware of, so you have to cite some specific examples. I don't, the correspondence that I've seen has always had all of us on it, so...
Well, for example, Kristen, your traffic impact memo, your legal opinion to Scott and Andy Heinrich wasn't shared with the board. In fact, I don't even believe it was even asked, you know, and I'm sure we received billing for it. That's one instance.
Well, that's, I think that's different. I think the thing was that if I was corresponding with one board member, I would correspond with all three. I was dealing with Scott and Andy because I needed clarification from the traffic engineer before I then brought the issue to the board and I have brought that issue to the board. It is something that we will need to further discuss as the Carlin application moves forward. So there's oftentimes I need to consult with staff members to get guidance and input, especially on things that I was not, um, privy to over the past 10 years of a land development plan. So I sought guidance and interpretation issues with Andy Heinrich as well as the manager and when I had clarification, I would bring it to the board and we have had conversations about this and I have alerted the board that this would be an issue that we would need to work through and discuss before any decision is rendered on that plan.
I'm talking about your actual firm's opinion on traffic impact credit and whether or not it is permitted to be given to the applicant. I'm not talking about this land development plan, I'm talking about...
No, I'm talking, that's exactly what I'm talking about. I'm talking to the email that I sent to Andy and Scott, which I then shared with the entire board.
You didn't share it with the board.
I have shared it with the board.
No, that's why I'm saying it right now. You haven't until I brought it up.
No, I'll go back and, and see, but I believe I've shared it with the board. If not through emails, I definitely know we've had a conversation about it in, in executive sessions.
And I think the import of our, the, the basis of the discussion, as I recall it in January, was we didn't want one board member to be communicating with staff or, uh, any of the other, Kristen, Nate, or any of the other consultants that we had without including all of the other board. And as far as I know, that has occurred.
Well, that hasn't occurred based on, um, Scott writing emails to Panoni, telling him that he's not gonna be reviewing the plan, that Inland's gonna be reviewing the plan. He didn't copy us on that. He didn't copy us on the email that he shared all of Inland's reviews with Nate. He didn't copy us on that email.
I, I remember specifically having the discussion about whether that was going to be all-inclusive and we all, I thought we all felt at that time that it wasn't that staff would have to include all the board on all of their communications, but the concern was that there wasn't communication with one board member that wasn't shared with all the others. So I think if Scott or Luke or anybody on the staff has to communicate with Nate or Kristen or any of the other consultants that would, that do work for the township, they can do that, but they can't communicate with me without including you two, or they can't communicate with you without including the other two. That was, the whole idea was the whole board had to be included on all communications, not just one board member.
And, and with anything, I'm sure there's ambiguity to this with, with perception on how things are, um, you know, my, my biggest concern would be, um, two board members making decision with the solicitor when one wasn't privy to the, to the discussion. So that, that would be my biggest concern.
No, I understand. I'm not saying, I'm not saying that any, every email requires a response to the board, but at least copy the board. I mean, it's in the minutes it says, "Communications with the various township boards and commissions, members, solicitors, vendors shall be copied, all three supervisors. Ms. Camp requests a direction for her main point of contact with the board, as been her experience with other municipalities, that she dealt primarily with the manager or chair of the board for most communications. A board request that Ms. Camp send communications to all board members, not just the chairman."
Yeah, and again...
Not just to the chairman. That's exactly what I've done. I've not, I've never communicated just with Kyle. If I send an email to any board member, the other two are copied. If I'm sending emails to your consultants, Nate, or if I have to talk to Mary, if I have to talk to Luke, if I have to talk to Scott, I didn't believe that I had to copy all three board members. I'm happy to do that. It's made a lot of emails.
That's, I'm saying moving forward, I would like to be copied on email. Not say you're gonna get a response from me.
Okay, that's fine. I'm happy to copy the whole world on these emails.
As well as, Bruce, I don't know why you're laughing. Uh, you have a comment? You could stand up and podium.
My comment is, I don't, I don't disagree with you that it's just as easy just to copy everybody and everybody has the information.
That's, that's all I'm saying. I'm not trying to point fingers and make a big deal, I'm just saying I want to bring it to attention.
And move forward from this point on.
Correct.
Forget about the past, move forward.
Correct.
If that's the way the board wants to do it, that's fine.
Correct. And then...
That's why I was just...
I mean, I guess I would ask if that's what the, the rest of the board members want, given that people get lots and lots of emails every day, so I think I would ask if that's what the board wants as a consensus.
Not what I want, I can tell you that, 'cause I get plenty of emails as it is. So, my biggest concern was that there was a suggestion that, um, the prior solicitor had not communicated with all of the board members all the time and that we wanted to correct that and, and we all agreed to correct that. I certainly don't think it's necessary for Luke and Scott, I have no idea how many emails they generate in a, in a given day, but I certainly don't want to be copied on every email that Luke and Scott send to Andy Heinrich or Nate or Kristen or anybody else that's involved with the township, because I spend enough time reading emails now.
Understand. Well, I prefer to be, so that's my request.
And, and I don't have a problem if Jason wants to be included on all those. Again, uh, there's, there's, that I know of, Scott and Luke, hundreds, hundreds a week, so, um...
Hundreds?
That, that I know of. And, uh, you know, so, so, so if Jason wants to be included on those, I have no problem with that. But I think it's, it's redundant for some of these things for, for everybody, um, but as, as with the way we agreed, uh, the, the decisions and, and the, and the supervisor, um, discussions, I agree, everybody needs to be included in those, which I think they have.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to bring that to attention and...
If one's copied, all should be copied.
That's the policy we've been following.
I agree.
Even though you don't want to read extra emails, if one's copied, they all should be copied.
I agree.
Um, okay.
And then, um, the second thing is, um, I'm sure folks are aware of, that I took it upon myself to, uh, follow through with my concern, stated back in July, about the temporary use of open space referendum funds or special accounts. Um, and I've been back and forth with our bank, I have all of the documents from 2003 to present and it, it appears to me that there's some issues concerning that and at this point, I want to open it up to the board to speak, um, but I, knowing that afterwards I'm gonna request a vote to have it turned over to our chief for an internal investigation. So, is there any questions or...
Well, my, and my response, Jason, is you brought that up again on Monday and, and I asked for the documentation that you claimed that you had then. You told me when you got back from New York you would provide it. We're now Thursday night and you still haven't provided it, so I'd like to see what this analysis is.
I didn't get, I was in New York for all of the week as well and I've been busy and this is a, um, elected position, I don't do this full-time and...
I understand, but you're, you're asking us to make a decision about something that you've done, you have documentation for. I think, I, I take it very, I, I think it's a very serious allegation, it's a, it's a very big concern of mine, but I'd like to see what the, what the work product is that you've, you've put together, so I know exactly what it is and then we can make a decision about what direction to go with it.
Do you have that?
I do, I do have a, I do have a folder, but I think though, that this information was also, you know, my concerns were voiced in July and, you know, now all of a sudden, it's, it's a concern to everyone. I'm, I'm not, I'm not taking that away from anyone, but at this point, you know, what, what's gonna change from what happened July till now if the board, I think at this point we should, I just prefer to just hand it over, here's all the information and just, and go through it and, um, and, you know, just to be, just to be safe.
I think we're entitled to see it. If you're gonna hand it over to somebody to look at it...
You would, I'm sure you can, I'm sure you can see, you have every right to see it, Jay, but, you know, you could vote no if you want, or yes, but I'm saying at this point, you know...
I don't know what I'm putting on because you haven't shown us anything.
I'd like to have it turned over for internal investigation.
Have you asked, have you asked the treasurer? I know Mary wasn't here, so she probably is not familiar with the paper trail, but is, I mean, one of the things I was thinking, I looked at 2010, 2011, I spent quite a bit of time and I had come to the conclusion that whatever was taken out from a certain fund was put back into that fund just for those two years, which were based on resolutions that you had raised. I did not go back in time, I don't have, I didn't have access to any of those other documents, but it seems to me like the person that would be, potentially be able to explain to you maybe what you're seeing as discrepancies would be Mary Beth Smedley. I don't know.
But she's not here and I reached out to...
Well, it would be somebody that she would probably be willing, like, she worked for the township for 30 years, I think she's a pretty, she's still a resident of the township, she obviously cares about the township. It may be worth having a dialogue and conversation with her, again, if the board, the rest of the board considers that.
I reached out, I reached out to Ms. Fuller to get some information a few times now without a response.
Ms. Fuller doesn't have, she doesn't represent the township anymore, she's not...
But she had at that point and that was the questions I had asked.
Yeah, well, I don't, I don't think she's gonna be the person that, at this point in time, is gonna be the one providing information. I think it's a, it's an accounting issue, I think that you have.
What's the difference in Ms. Fuller was working back there and she's not here now, but Mary's, our treasurer was working back there and not here now?
Because, well, because Mary's a resident of the township, I'm sorry, Mary Beth Smedley's a resident of the township and she's the one that did the accounting. She did the, she did the record-keeping that you're questioning. She's the one that would be in the know, she has the details of all of the accounting that went on, the transference of the funds.
I know.
She would be the person that has that information.
Well, I understand that, but, um, you know, I didn't get any help or author from her.
What year are we talking about, Jason?
2000, I went back to the creation account, 2003, but I, but it started 2006.
So the problem was from 2006?
2006 to, I believe, 2012, 13. And, you know, if it wasn't a concern, I wouldn't be asking for this.
Well, I, I, I would agree that I think before any investigation is done, I think the board has the right to, uh, I mean, if you've done the research and you have something that you would like to be looked at, and I think if you want to bring chief in on it, we'd bring chief in on it, but I don't have a problem with it as long as we're all in the same, um, and, and as, as Kristen just said, maybe Mary Beth Smedley should be a part of that discussion too, because if there's something that she could point out and say, no, that's here and we're all kicking tires, wasting our time on something that maybe wa, you know, isn't, isn't, isn't a problem, that's all.
And, and I'm not sure that turning it over to the chief is the appropriate course of action. I, that's why I asked to see it, because i, if...
Well, it's not permitted by Section 706, so it's a misdemeanor of third degree.
If, in fact, there are some discrepancies, maybe we need to bring somebody independent in to take a look at it. And I don't know if the beginning of that is to bring somebody in with a financial background that can look at the records and verify it, um...
But I have offered to do that and I actually offered to pay for that several months ago and that went to, you know, where we're at today, it just keeps going down and I'm just saying at this point, I think that we can do an internal investigation, uh, you're gonna have, you'll have access to the, to the documents as a board, um, so what's, I don't understand, um...
The police department does criminal investigations. If this, you haven't told me anything that indicates that there was criminal conduct, so if that...
Well, I mean, do, do you want me to read Section 706? It says it's not permitted and it's a, it is a criminal act. It's a misdemeanor to the third degree. It's...
What is?
The treasurer, no supervisor, is authorized to, for the use of special funds for no other purpose than what are they collected for.
I think there's an interpretation issue though, that if the funds were not ever spent on anything and the funds were loaned but went back, whether or not somebody would find that to be a crime or not. I think there's, there's, I'm not saying, I'm not, I am not saying that I favor one interpretation over the other, I'm saying there are two different interpretations.
What were you...
The interpretation is that the money was taken out and then spent on something. So for example, money is put into the open space fund based on the statute and then the township said, you know what, we don't really want to use the money for open space funds, we're gonna go buy police vehicles. Then I would agree with you, that's a clear violation of the statute. If the money was taken from the open space fund as a loan to the general fund, which it was, and then taken from the general fund immedi, not immediately, but...
Was it spent?
It was brought back to the fund and the money was back. I don't know if the money was spent, Jason.
Well, why would they put it there?
I'm just saying there are, there's more than one interpretation, that's the only thing I'm advocating. There's more than one interpretation of whether or not something was, was a crime.
I like to, at this point, I just prefer just to have it internally done, you know, everyone here has full-time jobs and it appears that there are some discrepancies and...
But it appears to you, nobody else has seen it, that's the problem.
Well, I've shared it with everyone, I've shared my concerns since July though.
Yeah, but not to documentation, that's what, that's what we're discussing here now.
I believe I have emailed, um...
Chief, what were you gonna say? You had something to do with it.
My biggest concern right now is that there seems to be a concern on Mr. Winter's part regarding open space funds and I'm still not clear as to whether he's trying to refer to a criminal problem or whether it's a civil internal township accounting issue.
Well, he's, yeah, he's saying to a second-class township code section that says that money that's designated for that fund cannot be spent on for another purpose.
I, I just don't think it's appropriate to be discussing this and the potential of releasing information that might be part of the investigation, it's gonna get compromised, that we should probably have this discussion, you know, in executive session or whatnot to at least get a better understanding of what we're talking about here before we hash this out in a public meeting.
Well, I thought, kinda thought that was what the point of public meetings were, but, I mean, I guess, if we wanna...
Well, I don't, Mr. Winters, I don't want to argue with you. I'm concerned, what I'm concerned about is, I, I understand what your concern is at this point, but to discuss it any further in detail, releasing details and discussing things about it, um, you're doing the investigation in public, so I don't think that's appropriate.
Well, I'd like to have a executive session to, to talk further on this.
I mean, we do it tonight?
Okay. And then, the last thing is, uh, we received an email today about, from the, uh, from Scott about a review of the Chester County Planning Commission on the NVR. I don't understand. Is that supposed to be reviewed now? Isn't, there's no, aren't we just talking about amendments to zoning and overlays, not land development or conditional use?
I'm sorry, I don't know what your question is.
There's, there's a review done by Chester County Planning Commission.
Yes, and there were amendments made since that time, so any further edits have to get sent back to the county planning commission before you guys would schedule a hearing. I mean, you can schedule a hearing, but it has, you have to at least wait the 30 days.
But we're, it's okay to get the county to review it before the conditional use is heard?
Yeah, the ordinance, they want the ordinance in place before they're, before they go forward with their applications.
But they did a review as X amount of units, as almost like a land development.
No, well, so, okay, so I'm getting confused, there's two different things. The county planning commission sent a review letter on the subdivision application, which isn't gonna go any further until the conditional use hearing goes forward. There's also been proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance that the applicant wants to put in place because of the change of where their front porches are located. That was reviewed by your task force committee and they've, and I know there was a memo that was sent out and their applicant's counsel is here to explain, I think, the changes that they propose. That, if the board agrees that that ordinance amendment is appropriate, the appropriate action would be for you to move for that ordinance to be sent back to the county planning commission for consideration and review.
Okay. I was just confused.
Yeah, I was confused too, 'cause the letter that came in from the county planning was really, it's their first review of the land development plans, but that plan, I mean, those are really just sort of advisory comments that you can take into consideration as you move forward, but as far as procedurally, you want the ordinance to be exactly the way, you know, the applicant's happy with it and they've suggested amendments, you get that in place, we'll proceed with the conditional use, which will lock their zoning in place, and then you'll proceed through the land development process.
Okay. That's all.
Okay. Any other public comment for non-agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on to the minutes of the previous meetings.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes of the December 6th, 2018 Board of Supervisors meeting as submitted.
I will, I do want to actually, there is some additional comments that I had made that I do want to incorporate that and Mary, I will get them to you.
Okay, thank you.
I know I've said this before and I didn't, uh, but I will.
All right, so...
Can we, can we table that?
So we're gonna hold off on December 6th?
That'd be great.
Um, treasurer's report.
Bank account balances as of December 20th, 2018 are as follows. General fund checking, $858,370.17. General fund investment, $1,125,422.81. State fund bank account, $157,410.96. Referendum open space, $2,359,653.75. Open space, $792,186.23. And traffic impact, $1,617,073.94. And there are a total of 115 checks in need of approval for the general fund and seven for the state fund.
Thank you. Let's take a minute to go over the finances.
Mary, I, I see that the, um, check to the senior center is here. Did we resolve the status of that?
Actually, I wanted to follow up with you on that, I am still holding the check. I didn't know if you had any information on...
I do not.
...the situation with that.
I do not.
But it is still being held at this point.
So I'll make a motion, we approve the requested disbursements with the exception of 24-261, which is the senior center check as requested.
Yeah, she said before. Okay, all right, and I, I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, township managers' report, Scott.
Thank you. Excuse me. Um, at our October general session meeting, I reported on the status of Locust Knoll Farm at 1,000 Horseshoe Pike. At that time, it was scheduled for settlement, um, on November 30th. Since that time, I've spoken to the prospective owner, David Thaw, um, who contacted me to report that legal issues were, um, being caused by the former owner were holding up the, the settlement and was anticipated to be later in the winter. Mr. Thaw was very disappointed because he basically waited a year for this. Um, when I returned his phone call, he left a message, uh, on a Monday, uh, while I was on vacation. I called him on Tuesday and he said he had better, um, better news, that he'd been, uh, the bank had been in contact with him, the bank that owns the, or holds the mortgage, and that, um, they were trying to resolve their legal issues, however, uh, it was probably gonna take some time into the spring of 2019. Um, so I know that he's anxious to move his wood shop to East Brandywine Township, which he got a, is there any hearing board relief, um, on? And, uh, we'd all like to see the, um, Locust Knoll Farm return to, or bring back to life. Um, I believe it was Tuesday, we received notice from PDEP about our NPDS permit for pollution reduction plan, or PRP, uh, for a portion of the Culbertson Run, um, that's been tentatively approved by the department. Notice will be placed in the Pennsylvania Bulletin to allow for public comment, uh, on that project. We also must place a notice in our, um, lobby for the same 30-day period. Uh, I'd like to, uh, recognize Beth Uller from Cedarville Engineering and also Matt Van Lu for their hard work on this. I know there were revisions that were made, this started, when did it start, Matt? I know it was 2017, but I believe the applicant, the original application was submitted in September 2017 and it's also my understanding that there are very few Chester County municipalities who have successfully gotten an NPDS permit for, uh, the MS4 projects. who have, uh, successfully, uh, gotten an NPDS permit for, uh, the MS4 projects that, um, DEP has to approve, so I think this is a, a great accomplishment. And on behalf of the, uh, Supervisors Township Staff, and I'll let Mark do that on behalf of the Police Department, uh, we wish all a very safe and joyous Christmas holiday, and a happy and healthy 2019.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Luke, Assistant Township Managers' Report.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have four agenda items, uh, this evening that I'll be discussing later. I actually don't have a report, but I would like to draw attention to the, um, solid waste collection schedule document that's, uh, in front of each of the board members and in the back of the room. Uh, thank you, Vice Chairman Fisher, for the idea. Um, that is a printable calendar of solid waste collection dates for 2019. I'd also like to thank Lisa Taraski for programming all the 2019 holidays, meetings, and collection dates into our online calendar.
So you actually did have a report?
Well, that's extemporaneous report.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Building Inspectors' Report.
Okay, for the month of November, there were twenty-seven building permits issued, nineteen use and occupancy permits were issued, a hundred and sixty-nine inspections completed, uh, eleven failed inspections, total fees collected by the Building Department, twenty-three thousand, seven eighty-one fifty, respectfully submitted to Rand Kink.
Thank you. Uh, Roadmasters' Report, Matt.
Thank you. Um, earlier today, we had a, um, pre-construction meeting with Veterans Construction Company. This is for a replacement of a cross pipe on Zinn Road, uh, located between East Reeseville Road and Hockley Drive. Um, the road will be closed, and the, uh, contractor expects to start Thursday, December 27th, weather permitting, and, uh, they expect the project to take one week.
Thank you. Um, Police Chief, for the Police Department Report.
Good evening, our monthly report for November 2018. The first Cookie with a Cop event was held last Wednesday night, December 12th, it was a huge success. Township parents and children came to the township building to decorate the holiday tree in our building lobby. Parents and children mingled with the police officers and enjoyed milk and cookies provided by Crops Market. Throughout the two-hour period, we estimate we had about one hundred to one hundred and fifty adults and children attending the event, and this included attendees from outside the township. Special thanks go out to all the children of Brandywine Wilds Elementary for making the tree decorations. Um, I'd like to thank Village Hardware for, uh, giving us some of the tree supplies, and to Officer Maureen Ray and our Secretaries Rose and Jackie for decorating and organizing the event. Um, if you'd like to see pictures, they are up on our Facebook page, and, um, it was a, it was a great night. As a side note, our Joe with Five-O, uh, that's Coffee with Police Officers, uh, will kick off again on Wednesday, February 6th, uh, we'll announce the location as we get closer to that date. The Police Department recorded two thousand three hundred and fifty-six incidents, we completed two hundred investigations, there were four criminal arrests, one summary arrest, we had no warrant arrests or juvenile petitions for the month, there were seven traffic accidents investigated, one hundred and ten traffic citations were issued, twenty-five warnings were issued, and officers logged seven thousand three hundred and forty-eight miles patrol. Uh, training for the month, the entire Police Department, uh, completed a nighttime firearms training, uh, we had no correspondence, and the board has their, the monthly investigations report and the officer activity report. And, uh, finally, I just also would like to echo, uh, Scott, and wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, Happy New Years, Happy Holidays, and, uh, just be safe in your travels.
Thank you. Um, the, the Fire Department couldn't be here today, they had asked if I would, uh, do their report, so for the East Brandywine Fire Company Report for November 18, they had twenty-two total fire incidents, three building fires, three assisting with the police, two motor vehicle accidents with injury, um, was in that total of twenty-two. They also had incidents by municipality, ten fire in East Brandywine, fourteen medical, uh, eight fire in West Brandywine, thirty-one medical, and two fire in Upper Euclid. The fuel usage for East Brandywine Township was a hundred and seventy-five point five gallons, West Brandywine Township, a hundred and eighty-three point five gallons, for a total gallons of three hundred and fifty-nine. And I also believe they had their breakfast with Santa this, um.
December 3rd.
Yeah, this month, so, um, I understand that went off great as well, so, that's the Fire Department's report. That's all I got, um, old business, um, I'm going to turn this over to Luke.
Yeah, it didn't take long, I'm right back. Um, you, before you this evening is the application of Sean Alvarez of, uh, 386 North Buck Road to be, uh, a member of the Township's Historical Commission, uh, fill the vacant remaining term, or the remaining term left vacant, um, when Dan Rhodes resigned. Um, at the November session, the Historical Commission voted to recommend, uh, Mr. Alvarez to the Board of Supervisors. Um, I would point out that in the audience is the, uh, Vice Chairman of the Historical Commission, uh, if you have any questions.
I think it was previously reported that he's come to several meetings.
He's been at the meetings since July, uh, we advertised to the law, he has an official sheet in my address, uh, he's enthusiastic, uh, his mindset fits in well with us, I think he would.
And I think we were just waiting on this.
Right. I'll make a motion, we appoint Sean Alvarez to the, uh, Historic Commission.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hmm, excuse me. Um, proposed addendum request, Hawthorne Drive Stormwater Improvement Design, Matt?
Yes, um, Cedarville Engineering has, uh, requested a, uh, an addendum to the proposal for Culbertson Run, for the, uh, Hawthorne Drive Steel Border Improvements. Um, I had forwarded to the board, uh, a timeline that's pretty much demonstrated how the, uh, this project has stretched out, um, due to numerous things. The, uh, one would be the aqua replacing the, the, um, water lines on Hawthorne Drive, um, the scope of the work changed due to the, the location of utilities, and I did speak to Beth Uller of Cedarville today, uh, she was not able to attend this evening, but she would, she has offered to, uh, attend a future Supervisors' Meeting to, uh, discuss this further, if, um, if the board chooses to, uh, do so.
I emailed, I guess everyone got that today, um, so I would like to talk to her further.
I have no, no problem, um, holding off until Jason has his questions answered, um, it's not a, I think we can put this to the next, next meeting. Um, so I'm, I'm okay with that as well. Um, all right, uh, new business, we're gonna, I'm gonna hand it over to Luke, and, and I'll let you decide how you want to roll with this.
Yeah, we have an interesting situation, we have both under old business, the, the, uh, the final budget, um, or the proposed final budget for the Township for 2019, and we also have later in your agenda, uh, a number of resolutions pertaining to that budget. Um, I, I propose that we have the conversation a little later on the agenda.
Yep. Um, and then you got permission to advertise surplus property?
Yeah, this is new, um, in, in our spare time here, the Township has been preparing to have a surplus property sale. Before you, in memo form, is draft language of a, uh, advertisement that, that I would like, uh, your authorization to send out pursuant to the Second Class Township Code. Basically, there are nine lots, um, they, the, the, the big items are the ICOP system retired from the, uh, the, the police fleet, um, a EasyMark Laser XS Diesel Zero Turn mower, and a 1998 GMC C-8500 Dump Truck with Plow, um, another miscellaneous office equipment to be, to be, um, auctioned off using the municipal bid website. Uh, and, for the benefit of, of newer members of the Board of Supervisors, there's, there's two votes on this. The, the first vote would be to advertise it, uh, and then it would need to be advertised a number of days before the bidding begins, and then, uh, it would be open for a certain length of time, and then it would conclude a day before one of your regularly scheduled meetings. Um, at that meeting, I would then have a list of the apparent high bidders, and would ask your permission to convey the property to the apparent high bidder, so, um, this is, is a two-step process in terms of board permission.
And am I reading this correctly, it's a PC mice, not mouse?
Good catch, uh, that's a, yeah, that is interesting. It is, it is a number of mice.
Okay, um, I'll make a motion that we authorize advertising the, uh, nine lots of surplus township property as requested.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then the ScanTech Document Conversion Proposal.
Right, uh, this is me again, hot off the presses, dated yesterday, is a proposal from ScanTech, which is a co-stars vendor that does document imaging. The proposal is to digitize the records that we have pertaining to all phases of the Apple Cross, uh, development. That's about twenty-three, twenty-four thousand pages estimated. Um, the, the, what's kind of incentivized, uh, staff requesting the proposal is that we have a current right to no request, um, that, well, first of all, it's a good idea, we, we've invested in the, in the, uh, Laserfish system, um, and we adopted that, and we said, hey, day one, we're going to start adding new documents to the electronic file system. Um, we've long anticipated that we would revisit older files and can scan them and put them, make them available and searchable in Laserfish. Um, this is not that, this is just one large development, approximately twenty-four thousand pages, and, uh, doing it now would allow us to respond, uh, to the, uh, the, the Apple Cross HOA's right-to-no request, um, in a way that wouldn't pull all of the staff all hands on deck, just feeding paper through the scanners for days on end. Uh, the, the proposal is, um, for, let me get to the bottom line. The proposal for the large format is eighty-eight cents a page, and for the, uh, uh, small format, it is, um, uh, four cents a page for scanning, uh, eleven by seventeens. Total proposal is eight thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars, and if we accept the offer before the end of the year, there's a seven hundred and fifty dollar, um, uh, reduction in the cost, yes.
Yeah, seeing the stats on the bottom there, I don't have a problem with that.
Luke, I have a question, um, I noticed in the optional items, that there's the option to get the, I guess, the documents in OCR format, what format are they, would they, are they providing as the base format?
Right, well, uh, so, the, the base format for the Laserfish software is called TIFF, T-I-F, which is a image file.
Right.
Um, what we would want the files back from the, the, the scanning service would be PDF, and then we would import the PDFs. And, and the reason for that is, is TIFFs are single pages in Laserfish indexes, so if you had a file that was thirty-six pages in a PDF, once it goes into Laserfish and, and optical character recognition is run on it, they become thirty-six individual TIFF files. And the reason is that TIFFs cannot be altered in a way that PDF can, it's a more secure format for, for permanent storage. Um, so I would decline the optical character recognition portion, our software will do that if they can get it just to a, the PDF.
But you said they're, they're going to give it to you in a TIFF, not a PDF?
Uh, they would give it to us in PDF, and then we would drag and drop those into Laserfish, which would process them into TIFFs that are, that are, that are, that are searchable.
All right. That was the only question I had.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the ScanTech contract, uh, for eight thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars and ten cents, minus the two hundred and fifty dollar incentive.
Two fifty or seven?
Seven fifty, yeah.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. All right, subdivision and zoning applications, East Brandywine Center Giant 2018, Carlino East Brandywine LP Extension to Render Decision, Kristen Camp.
Yeah, knowing that we were going to have to have continual hearings, I had asked the applicant's counsel to send a further extension, and he did so granting, um, extension through to February 22nd. So, and that may not be sufficient, we'll have to see how the hearings progress. The next hearing is obviously scheduled, was it January?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth, at nine AM.
I'll make a motion that we accept the, uh, Carlino East Brandywine Associates' Extension until February 22nd, 2019.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the Highway Farms dedication of Road and Infrastructure, Kristen.
Yeah, so Highway Farms is dedicating, um, I guess, the first phase of public improvements. Um, Tim Townes from South Town Homes was not able to make it tonight, but he has been in communication with me, and I have reviewed all the documents. I had had, uh, definitely some suggestions for edits that have been made. So, the first series is the deed of dedication, the roads are, um, Colleen Circle, a portion of Emma Court, Jake Court, a portion of Rebecca Drive, Rico Circle, and Willow Oak Way, and I'll take a step back, before we would even bring this to you, um, your Public Works Department, and also your keys did inspections and confirmed that all the punch list items had been completed, and the roads are acceptable for purposes of dedicating to the township. So the first document would be to accept the deed of dedication for those roads. Um, I'll explain all of them, and then you can take different motions if you want. The second one is portions of the culverts go outside of the road right-of-way, and, um, Matt Van Lu brought it to our attention that, you know, the Township is going to be responsible to maintain these culverts, we need to make sure we have the right to go on to the land that the wing walls and end walls go into, which is land owned by the Homeowners Association. So, uh, Tim Townes Council drafted an easement document that would give the Township the right to go beyond the boundaries of the right-of-way that's being dedicated for purposes of maintaining the culvert structures. It, the document also transfers legal title to the actual culvert structure, um, underneath the road as it extends into the right-of-way, so that's the second document. And we're only, um, they had originally proposed to dedicate all of the culvert structures now, and I said, we don't want them unless we're accepting the roads, so they separated them out into two documents. So you're only accepting the ones, um, tonight for the roads that you're accepting. And the, anytime you accept dedication of public improvements, you do a maintenance security agreement, which, uh, is, requires the applicant to post a maintenance bond for a period of eighteen months. And the amount of money that has to be secured, what they do is, they calculate what the cost of completing the construction of the things being dedicated, so the roads and the culvert structures being dedicated, and you take fifteen percent of the actual cost of construction, that's what the maintenance security amount is. And I had reviewed the maintenance security agreement, and I had reviewed, reviewed the maintenance bond, I handed to Mary the original of the bond, and I think everything's in order for you to accept and pass both resolutions, accepting the dedication of the roads I mentioned, and the two culvert structures. I'll be answering any questions.
Yeah, my only question is, some of these roads are ten, twelve years older at this point, are they?
They've been, uh, they've been paved within the last about year and a half or so.
Yeah, but, like, Rico Circle's been paved for, for.
The, the base coat was paved, yes, but, uh.
Yeah, not, not the wear coat. Yeah, it's just crazy, it's, you know, normally it's way before this.
The length of time?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, they actually started that development when the, uh, economy took, uh, took a dump, so they, they sat on it for quite a while until they, uh, until things turned around.
And there are, too, some conditions in the, um, in the dedication and the resolution. Um, the applicant has sent a letter to the board indicating that, um, we agreed to overlay Willow Oak Way again at the time that they placed the wearing surface on the remainder of Emma Court, so I included that into the resolution, and then also, the sanitary sewer lines are not being dedicated yet to the municipal. authority, so we wanted to make sure that there was a reservation that those lines could still be dedicated to the authority when it's appropriate to do so. So those two conditions are stated in the resolution.
Okay.
There's two separate resolutions. One would be a resolution for the roads, and one would be a resolution for the culvert structures.
Do we have any questions? We're going to do those when we do the resolutions, or are we going to...
Do you want to do them now, or the...
You could do it now, and if you'd like me, I could... What the appropriate motion would be that you authorize or approve resolution both to accept deed of dedication of the public roads that I mentioned, accept the deed of dedication of the two culvert structures and the stormwater conveyance improvements, and authorize the board to enter the maintenance security agreement for the items being dedicated.
I'll make a motion we adopt Resolution 29 and Resolution 30 as submitted, and approve the maintenance security agreement with Highway Farms.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 27 of 2018, adopting the final budget amounts for the fiscal year 2019. Luke, that'll be you again.
Yes, it is. So the budget in front of you is in two documents. It is the line item detail, which is the 11 by 17 ledger before you, and then a bundled eight-and-a-half by 11 set, which is budget detail forms for selected line items. Also before you is a draft of Resolution 27 of 2018. This is language that is new. Buckley Bryan has a slightly different recommended format for adopting the budget. It has much more detail than what we have done historically. There has been only one change in both of the budget documents since the last time you saw it, which was your work session of November. And that is that the line item for public works salaries is the detail form of that has been removed. So there's no change to the line item, but the detail form is omitted.
No questions.
I didn't understand what he said. I'm sorry. What did he say? Luke, what did you say?
In terms of changes in the budget since the last time? So in the packet that is detail of selected line items, there was a breakdown of the public work salaries, and I have omitted that. And I have omitted that because it showed a chart that was a step and grade system. And I, it's my just estimation that there's not consensus on the board, and I would rather not put that in a document that you adopt.
I'm good.
I'll make a motion we adopt Resolution 27 of 2018, approving the 2019 final budget and budget for the general fund and the state liquid fuels fund.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 28 of 2018, fixing the general tax levy rate and fire service tax rate for the calendar year 2019.
This is me again. Also, in front of you is a resolution that describes the two real estate millages that are assessed on properties in the township. The first is the tax rate for general purpose, and the second is the tax rate that is designated for fire service protection. The first tax rate is 2.5 mils for general purpose. That is unchanged from the previous year. The second tax rate or levy for fire services tax is .365 mils, and that is also unchanged from the previous year.
Questions on that?
I have no questions. I'll make a motion we adopt Resolution 28 of 2018.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 29 of 2018.
We did those.
Resolution 30 of 2018, accepting deed and dedication of culvert... No, oh, no. We didn't do the Willow Oak Way, though, did we? I know we did the other two, but did we say the Willow Oak Way?
That was part of the... That was one of the roads referenced in the deed, yes.
Okay, because I know that was a separate letter, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, they were all included.
Okay.
Yep.
Resolution 30 of 2018, except... Okay, we did that.
Yep.
Authorization to submit and amend the AQRC overlay district to revise allowable impervious surface. Scott?
Yes. We've been working with Lindsey Dunn and Sebastian Farrar for, I don't know, six weeks to revise the existing AQRC overlay language to, with regard to the impervious surface coverage in the packet that you have. I've highlighted, or we've highlighted, the changes that have been made to... The first change is to subsection 399-1026F, number one, which is lot regulations shall be as follows. Fifty-five percent of gross lot area, provided, however, that no single-family detached lot shall have more than 4,000 square feet of impervious coverage. This is what was discussed last night at the ordinance task force meeting. This came out of the planning commission meeting on December the 5th. And we went back and forth, back and forth, and I thought it was a good idea to have discussion at the ordinance task force meeting, which we did. Sebastian was here to try and explain some of the intricacies to, with regard to making that change. And Lindsey, I'll let you talk in a minute. And then also, there was some discussion about making sure that the porches, which was what started this issue, NVR wants to use a different style of house product, which has an extended front porch, and the next section, section two, will allow for these porches and other similar accoutrements, I'll call them, such as the gutters and eaves, fascia, et cetera, and other architectural elements. No gargoyles, right, Jay?
I think they can have gargoyles.
I don't think Sebastian wants that. Anyway, that, section two permits that, but the issue there was to make sure that the porches do not become enclosed structures, which would add additional potential living So those porches are permitted to extend, porches, steps that are attached are permitted to extend not more than five feet into the required front yard setback. And then the last, the last change in 399-1026I2 is that the neck tract area shall have maximum impervious coverage of 25%, which, again, that was an oversight in a previous iteration of this. And at the end, I have attached, or in the middle is back and forth between Sebastian, Lindsey, and I, and then the ordinance, I put this into ordinance format late today when David Sweet contacted me. So what you see there is basically what Lindsey said with one exception, that in the F1, David suggested, and I'll quote the following, "No single-family detached lot shall have more than 55% of impervious coverage or 4,000 square feet of impervious coverage, whichever is less." And David did speak to Lindsey, and she didn't have a problem with that. So basically what I'm asking, and if anyone had seen the previous agenda, I made a mistake and told Mary that I was going to ask the board to authorize advertisement of this. It's not. It has to go to the county planning commission for Act 247 review. So that was my fault.
Did you want to...
I would, just briefly.
Because Scott forgot already about you.
You were going to let me speak.
I did. I'm done, so you can now speak.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Kyle, I know Mr. Winters and Mr. Fisher are both on the ordinance task force, so they have a lot more history about this. I think Scott gave a pretty good synopsis of what we're doing and why, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
No, I understand. Yeah, I get, especially with the closing end of the porches, I get that, so I'm fine.
Okay. Unfortunately, what ended up happening was the county planning commission reviewed it before, but then we noted an issue with impervious maximum coverages in the community, and so that's why it's taken six weeks. I think we're at a place now where we're happy, and the planning commission is satisfied in terms of our capability to manage stormwater. But what I would ask for tonight, with the understanding that, you know, this is going back to the county planning commission, is basically for the board to ratify what's happening here. I know you can't vote on it, but I just want to make sure that we're dealing with any issues that the board might have, Kyle Scribner in particular, since you're not on the ordinance task force, if you have any questions or any comments before we ship it out to the county again.
No, I know the MPDS is, I'm dealing with it myself right now, so I know it's a tough one, but no, I'm good.
Okay. I know it's a little ambitious, but I was just thinking about timeline. The conditional use application for this project is, I believe, to be scheduled during the last week of January. Is that accurate?
I mean, that's what our discussions were. We haven't solidified the date yet.
Okay. With that in mind, I know that the board is going to have a meeting on January 24th, the third Thursday of the month of January. Do you think there's any way we can get this to the county planning commission tomorrow so that we know it'll be back?
Do you have any money?
Yes.
No, it's, I have it queued up already.
Okay.
Electronically, so they should have it tomorrow morning.
Wonderful.
Maybe.
Just make sure you change the section numbers on the back are wrong.
Yes, I just saw that. You wouldn't have...
If not, we, I don't know if you're doing them electronically. If you forward this to me, my assistant will be in tomorrow, and she can electronically file it. But I don't think the intention was for the board to hold a conditional use hearing the night of your regular meeting. I thought we were going to do that at a separate meeting, but obviously it's up to the board.
I think what she's suggesting is that if we have the plan, if we have the 247 review back in January, we can authorize advertising the ordinance.
Oh, okay.
So that it's moving forward.
Correct. Right, because if they get it tomorrow, they'll only have 30 days, they have 30 days to review. So we would have it back in time for the board's second January meeting, not the conditional use hearing, just the second regular meeting. And that would predate the conditional use hearing, which would just sort of make things...
But, so I'm still confused. Are you asking them to hold a hearing on the ordinance on the 24th?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what she's... Well, we would need to authorize advertising for it.
Well, we can't, we usually don't advertise till after we get the 247.
You can't authorize advertising before you receive the planning commission's...
They can, it's just not their normal practice.
Okay.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, if the board is comfortable doing that, I would request it.
Do you see anything?
No, if you guys are comfortable with the language of this, you can authorize it to be advertised for a hearing on the date she's asking, as long as we give 30 days before that hearing. You know, if we send it tomorrow, then there'll be 30 days between tomorrow and the hearing, the January 24th, and that's fine. If by chance, though, you get something back in a comment from the county and you say, oh, we want to change it, that's off. You don't adopt it at that hearing, you would just have to send it back again. So that's fine. Everybody does it a little differently. Sometimes it's just administratively handled. It isn't come to a, you know, a formal vote to send it to county planning. It doesn't come to a formal vote to authorize it. Like I said, everyone does it a little differently, and there's no right or wrong. What I do know is that it has to be sent to the county planning, the exact ordinance that you intend to adopt, at least 30 days prior to the adoption hearing. And you also have to advertise it two weeks out, not less than seven, not more than 30 days prior to the actual hearing.
And like I said, I know it's a little ambitious. Normally, I wouldn't be this pushy, but I just think it would be nice to have the hearing on the text amendment before we do the hearing on the conditional use application.
Yeah, and as I said, I'm dealing with it right now, and I know it could take forever, so I have no problem with it.
Thank you.
Authorizing both, the Act 247 review and also the advertisement for the 24th.
Right, and she has lots of money, so she'll pay for all that.
The wall is back. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Are you going to vote on that?
Yeah, I was going to say, do we have a vote?
Was it Jade?
Did you make a motion?
So how do you want to word the motion? You want to...
I would just say, the board authorizes that this amendment be sent to the county planning commission tomorrow morning, and you authorize for a public hearing to be conducted at your meeting on January 24th. Don't move, somebody can say.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
This is present to wrap. No, I'm kidding.
All right.
And then, so while we're on the topic, Lindsey, before you leave, is it your intention then that the board would, because we talked about potentially holding the conditional use hearing maybe the last week of January. So I would just say, I don't know if anyone's on vacation that week, or...
I'm going away at the end of January, but I don't know when.
Okay. So maybe you could look at your calendar and let us know, because we're going to need another extension if we can't hold it that last week.
Right, right. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. And maybe you guys, if you have conflicts of that week, let us know.
I never go anywhere, so...
Well, but other meetings and stuff.
Oh, that's true.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, public comment on agenda items. Seeing none, notices... Oh, yes. Sorry.
Mr. Rawlings, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask you to come up.
Please use the mic. Where's your sign?
Not being at the hearing, I just wanted an update on where that went and what's the next step of the hearing, because my board asks what's going on all the time. I just wanted to hear.
Oh, we have, how many hours, Luke?
Five hours and 37 minutes.
Of actual record time that is on the township YouTube channel. How did it go? It's a double-edged sword. It went, it went well. We only got through one person.
Mr. Kaplan presented his engineer, and they primarily focused on the need for the waivers, and they explained to the board the waiver, and they tried to justify the waivers, and the protestants' council cross-examined him, and I believe we got through with that.
We just got through a little after 4:00, the engineer.
Yeah.
So there's going to be another one or another two?
Scheduled two more, just in case. We're hoping to be able to get them done in the next two. The first one is another all day. We scheduled the time from 9:00 to 5:00, I believe. And then the following Tuesday, we have, there were some conflicts, so we're going to start at 8:00 AM, and we've allotted till 2:00 PM. So we'll see what happens.
And the planning commission doesn't need to attend, or not going to be part of the witnesses, or whatever?
No, I mean, I sort of, we'll confer with the board on what evidence or testimony or consultants you want, you know, to call on your own behalf, in terms of if you wanted Nate Klein to be there, if you wanted Annie Heinrich, if you have questions for them. If you have questions with the planning commission, by all means, let us know that. We did mark, one of the things that was very helpful was that both council agreed to stipulate to allow board exhibits to just be introduced. So I did mark the planning commission minutes from the meeting where you guys did your recommendation, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm glad I didn't sit through it.
Any other public comment of agenda items? Seeing none, the notices that the 2019 reorg meeting will be held on Monday, January 7th, 2019, at 9:00 AM. There will be no work session on Thursday, January 3rd, 2019. An executive session will be held directly following this evening's meeting to discuss legal matters. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Actually, before you do, Mr. Chairman, was there another executive session between the last meeting and this that we need to announce happened?
I don't know if it was executive, but I guess we could state that there was an executive session after the hearing. I don't know if it was...
Obviously, I wouldn't have been privy to anything.
Never remember that.
I'm just making sure that we're not missing anything.
That's what I'm saying.
No, I don't think we did. Yeah, I don't think we did. Did we?
No, I don't think we did.
No.
Thank you.
Not that I'm aware of.
I have to give you one question. The planning commission is going to meet, do I need to come up?
We were this close to a motion to adjourn, and then I broke it.
I'm sorry. The planning commission is meeting before your reorganizational meeting. Is that okay to do that?
Okay.
And Scott's saying okay, but I'm just clarifying.
Absolutely.
Because usually you have your meeting before any other New Year meetings.
No, I...
I just wanted it on record that we are meeting, so I'm just...
Yep. Kristen, you don't have a problem with the planning commission meeting before our meeting?
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Couple days into January.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yep.
I didn't think so either.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
Does anybody have...
All in favor?